Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's Zoom presentation from the DPW Department regarding the sidewalk. Master plan ADA ADA transition plan. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Barry La Rivera, Assistant DPW Director to. I'm going through the presentation and I'll turn the keys over to him. Barry, you can take over from there and. You wanna, I suppose we'd probably wanna hold to the end for questions.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think there's only eleven of us on. I'm not opposed to people, you know, asking a question as I'm going.
Alright.
We have a lot of, you know, information to go through. Let me try to connect here. Why is it not liking? Yeah, no, it seems a little slow tonight, Rich. I'm having issues on my end too here. You cursed us.
Apparently. Well, the other. Way to work around is I can. Go in and. You know, I can go through the presentation and then you can just talk through the slides.
Yeah, it's not, that's weird. It's not showing me access to my computer. Let me X out and try again. Technology at its finest tonight, Rich.
Guess so.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. Because we're recording or?
Let me. No, it shouldn't be. So the PowerPoint that you sent me, let's see which one is it? Yeah, so. It has draft on it, right? First page?
Uh, no, no, that's not it. Yeah, that's weird. It's not, I am not getting access to my own computer, which is interesting.
Alright, so I'm gonna go in and now. Alright, well, there's one more than one way to.
Yeah, that is true.
Issues, so we'll go in.
Let me, let me, let me try it this way.
Well, this is your presentation, right? On the screen, you see it?
Yes. Can you, can you see mine?
Well, no, I got yours displayed right now. Well, I'm displaying yours. I could stop sharing, maybe.
Yeah, can you stop? I fired mine up. Maybe I needed to do that first.
Okay.
There it goes.
There it goes.
Yeah, looks like I had to fire it up first. That's, that's an interesting take.
Alright. Well, now that we got through the issues and so forth.
We passed the test.
I guess so, so go ahead.
Could everybody, everybody can see that? Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So thank you for attending tonight. So we're gonna go over our ADA's. Transition plan. So as part of the ADA facility study. We kind of combined the two projects together. So Scott and HR and the DPW got together. And said, hey, you know, we have to do these ADA projects. Let's combine them together. So tonight I'm gonna take you through the, it's the public right of way. Simpler stated, it's sidewalks, curb ramps, crosswalks and pedestrian accesses within the roadway. So we give you a brief introduction to what the self evaluation and transition plan is. Our project methodology, the findings, proposed improvement costs. The prioritization plan we used. Take a look at project funding and as part of this, we also looked at new sidewalk construction. So we looked at. And projects that were brought up and complete streets and the master plan. To kind of get some values associated with new construction as well as what we have to do for repair. So tonight, it's myself, Barry La Riviera, the Assistant Director. Blair Crane, the DPW Director is here, and then Jack Madden, he's the Senior Project Manager of Beta Group. They were the firm that performed the work for the town in Norfolk. So a self evaluation and transition plan, SETP, is required for all municipalities under Title II. Of the Americans with Disabilities Act in Section 504, the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. Its purpose is to show efforts currently underway by the town to comply with terms of the ADA, which prohibits discrimination based on a person's physical and mental abilities. While the self evaluation identifies existing barriers to accessibility to the town's programs, services and activities. The transition plan will serve as a guide for their removal. So there was a couple other steps that we had to do as part of the document. It was designating responsible party for coordination and implementation of ADA requirements. Develop a grievance procedure and display a notice of ADA requirements and the town's commitment to accessibility. So similar to the facilities, this will go up at some point for public comment. We can get feedback from the community. And anything that they have concerns with regarding ADA. So additionally, the goal of this report, it serves as a planning tool for making necessary infrastructure improvements. That will benefit the town in Norfolk. And overall, it'll help make recommendations that align with our asset management goals and objectives. One thing to keep in mind at all points in the process, the town is in control of this plan. And has a right to provide reasonable accommodations and funding as resources are available. So this is the high level, you know, takeaway of what was studied. There's a bunch of information to go over. We just want to basically present it all to get everybody thinking along the lines as we are for what we need to do moving forward. So Beta Group was selected by the town on April twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to assist. With helping us getting the ADA study done. Field crews conducted a field-based GIS inventory of all town-owned sidewalks, curb ramps and crosswalks. This was important to us when we were selecting the firm to do this work. It's boots on the ground. You know, it was basically represented as a beta going out, looking at every sidewalk, looking at every crosswalk, looking at every curb ramp. And gathering information. So some of the information they corrected was material, dimensional and conditional data. Any obstacles such as telephone poles, trees, mailboxes, things over in the way. Deficient items that were identified based on current ADA standards. And then recommend recommendations were made for removal and or replacement. Of what they encountered. And then each, I think the key here is each inventoried item was assigned a priority level. Based on its location relative to typical pedestrian traffic generators. So what we, what we did is we came up with a tier classification. Tier A is all the schools with a quarter mile buffer. Tier B is your general business district. Tier C is our municipal area downtown, town hall, library, senior centers. And tier D was all the other remaining areas of the town. So this allowed us to come up with an overall plan. Based on these pedestrian generators, which are usually the most important areas that we need sidewalks. To allow us to prioritize and quantify the information that they gathered. Hey Barry, I don't think your screen is scrolling. Cause you're still, it's still, it's still showing the very first page. This happened last time too.
Yeah, it did.
Did it change now?
Nope. Oh, yeah. I was getting interrupted, sorry.
How about if I, if I do it this way, can you see it?
I see it now.
Yeah, it just changed. There you go. So I'm gonna have to do it the old fashioned way. And I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need Rich's glasses then. Alright, so you can see that I'm on general findings?
Yes.
Alright. So like just some general information that that came out of the study. So there was thirty-seven point three five miles of sidewalk within the town in Norfolk. There was nineteen ninety-two maintenance and structural deficiencies that were found. The neat thing about this is actually a point was generated. So this was all done in GIS. In using GPS technology. So for every maintenance issue, a structural issue they found is actually a point on the map. So and I can pull up a map, see the points on the map and actually click on it by identifying what it is. They took a look at the sidewalk gaps. So this included information from the complete streets, master plan. And then as part of the project, we wanted to do a gap analysis where, you know, there's a piece of sidewalk missing that probably should be there to make a full connection. They set the assessment summarize a quantity of items that need to be replaced over time within each priority area. So we looked at poor condition sidewalks, non-compliant curb ramps, non-compliant crosswalks, missing curb ramps. And then also the granite cobble pedestrian crosswalks downtown. The biggest issue that we found that was causing the greatest factor in non-compliance is tree roots. I know I've done a couple presentations to the board, to the planning board previously. Showing the issues that we have with tree roots throughout town on our sidewalks. And it was proven throughout the study. It might be tough to see on this map, but everything in red. Indicates a sidewalk location that's in poor condition. The fairs are in light blue, the good are in orange. So you can see, you know, as we've talked about in the past, I got the Worcester Road area, Mass Ave area. The areas that we have tree root issues, we have poor condition sidewalks. Now we just do some, you know, nice graphs and charts so we can actually understand, you know, what I was just saying. So there was thirty-four point one miles of asphalt sidewalk. And we have three point four miles of concrete sidewalk. So fifty-three percent of our network, which is nineteen point seven one miles, is in poor condition. So a majority of our network is in poor condition. Curb ramps. So we have fifty-nine percent of our curb ramps are asphalt, forty-one percent are concrete. In this case, you know, two hundred and forty-seven or fifty-eight percent of our curb ramps are in good condition. That's a little misleading. We could have great curb ramps, but if they don't meet compliance. So only twenty-five percent of our curb ramps are in compliance, I mean, excuse me, six percent of our ramps are in compliance. And four hundred and four of out of compliance. Things that make them in non-compliant would be, or compliance would be a property install the tactile warning panel. Proper dimensions, proper slope measurements. You know, visible instructions. Is there a catch basin in front of the curb ramp? Is there something in the way? And the big one is change in level. So recently, this summer. We, through the shared streets grant, we were able to actually retrofit. Eight curb ramps with an ADA panel that put them in compliance. So that's one of the good things about this information. You know, not every curb ramp that we have to look at is in dire need of reconstruction. Some of them are just in a matter of putting an ADA tactile warning panel on them and they would meet compliance for us. Then we did the, this is another one that gives us the overall condition, although I already, sorry, I already did this one. Oh, now we gotta move into the crosswalks and. Compliance. So there are twenty-five locations in the town hill area where granite cobbles are used. Unfortunately, this surface creates a condition that is not within the parameters of ADA compliance due to the rough finish and border joints. It is recommended that the granite cobbles be removed. And replaced with asphalt or another surfaces that minimize, minimizes the change in level. So basically what they're looking at is any. Change the level of a quarter inch is a trip hazard. So all these cobbles sticking up and popping up are a trip hazard. The interesting thing was the twenty-five locations that are not a compliant. Or once brick and they were ADA compliant. So when the cobble, when the crosswalks got changed over from the brick. To the cobbles, now we're looking at a non-compliance issue. So we can kind of take a look at some of the improvement costs. So this, these are numbers for the recommendation and reconstruction rehabilitation of sidewalks, curb ramps. Everything in this project follows MasDIT standards and current, you know, federal standards. We were. Very particular that our numbers and everything that we were looking at wanted to be in compliance and moving forward. We don't want to put in infrastructure that's not compliant and have to rip it out again. So we dug in the deep, Jack and I, we went back and for this on many times. So everything right now is current as of October twenty-one. Using current costs. As we all know, the cost of materials, the cost of everything up is going up constantly. So it's really tough to nail this down. We aired on the high side of everything and using, you know, beta had some current projects. I had some current knowledge of pricing going on. So we think we're, you know, we have enough cushion in here. The also, the other thing, nice thing about this too, by using the MasDOT pricing. And other state pricing, it's typically higher than what the town pays. So we already have a cushion in here. So if we do go out to do construction with town budgets. And, and other, excuse me, and other town bids, our numbers typically come in lower. So there could be a savings, but we wanted to. Like I said, air on the side of caution. So for sidewalk reconstruction, it's a hundred and fifty dollars when you're first foot. Curb ramp replacement or new construction of a curb ramp is sixty-two hundred dollars a piece. And to remove the granite cobble crosswalks and do some sort of stamped asphalt or something like that in the future, it's about fifty dollars a square foot. So the other thing that about the sidewalk reconstruction, you know, these are things that we keep running into. We have to do a review of the easement to see even if we have an easement there that allows us to actually touch the sidewalk. We have to remove the existing sidewalk. And replace it with a five-foot sidewalk. So the. Current, the current width of the sidewalks in Norfolk are four feet. New standards are five feet. So we have to look and see if the easement is the right width. If we can get a five-foot sidewalk in, maintain the grass strip, do everything that we need to do with that. And we have to look at the tree and tree removal. We came up with a ballpark estimate, you know, for the tree removal. The other discussion that I think we need to have with the planning board is, are we gonna be required to replace the trees? You know, a lot of these street trees that went in because of planning board regulations during the, the construction of the subdivision. Does it make sense to put the street trees back in the grass strip? Or five feet off the back of the sidewalk just to have issues in the future? So there's gonna be, you know, a lot of food for thought here, a lot of things we need to consider. So this is a look at the priority prioritization plan. So tier one, as we talked about, is the priority one would be poor condition sidewalks that require a hundred percent replacement. In the different tier scenarios. So tier one A, one B, one C, one D. Priority two fall within the second tiers and then priority three fall within the third tier. So poor condition sidewalks, say one A being the most important, you know, is five billion dollars. If we look at all, you know, the tier one. It's fifteen million. I'm not gonna get into every single level of minutiae here, but the overall number. Just to, you know, replay, repair existing sidewalks is right around twenty-nine million dollars. Did the same thing with the curb ramps, using the same prioritization schedule, the tiers A, B, C and D. Pores within those areas. So we're looking at about three million dollars to go out and fix the curb ramps. And you gotta remember, some of these curb ramps in the sidewalks are gonna be together within a project. You know, so that'll lower the cost of things and tie things in together. But to get solid numbers, we wanted to look at everything individually. And then the crosswalk is like we discussed. So, you know, replacing the granite cobbles with some sort of, you know, asphalt or stamped asphalt or something of that, that nature. Is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This price is a little bit lower in this scenario because we can use DPW bids. And DPW subcontractors that we already have in place to do this work. Sidewalks and curb ramps. So when we start looking at wholesale projects, you know, we're gonna have to have a vendor come in, bid out projects. Cause it's, it might be a little bit too much for the DPW to handle. Don't want to get into project specific information at this time. We're really not there yet. Just want to give everybody, you know, a broad perspective, but just keep that in mind. So the overall plan coming out of the side, coming out of the assessment is our backlog for sidewalks is twenty-nine million. Curb ramp right around three billion. Crosswalk repairs, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we're looking close to, you know, over thirty-three million dollars. For us to go out tomorrow and fix everything. That's not the plan, but that's the, that's the number of our backlog that we're looking at. So then we gotta get into the, the project funding. So it is recommended coming out of this that the town should commit, you know, an amount. Every year to go towards the repair and replacement of sidewalks. For the purposes of this presentation, we're using a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. So it'd give us sixty-three thousand dollars to sidewalks annually, sixty-two thousand dollars to curb. Curb ramps annually for a total budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I've added a little chart down here that gives us different scenarios. So if we decide a hundred and twenty-five thousand is too much. We have a twenty-five thousand dollar scenario, a fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, and then of course I gotta shoot for the moon. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar scenario. So it breaks down what would we, the amounts that we would spend on each. But we do need some sort of plan moving forward. And that was a thought tonight was to get some input from. The select board, planning board to see, you know, how we wanted to move forward with this. This is a little bit more tougher to see.
But it's, I just wanna pause a moment. Can you see Chris's question in the chat?
Chris's question in the chat.
I can read it out. So I was curious, the cost of materials is based on swapping like for like? Material wise asphalt for asphalt or everything going to asphalt?
Well, so right, it is like for like right now. So if it was basically existing concrete, it's gonna be concrete. But we do have budget numbers to say, hey, maybe we want to turn that concrete to asphalt. It's actually a little tougher to do that. A lot of our, you know, subdivision neighborhoods, it's asphalt sidewalks, it would be asphalt to asphalt. Downtown is more where we have all the concrete sidewalks. I probably, you know, to keep the appeal, the aesthetics of downtown, we would do concrete for concrete downtown, asphalt for asphalt everywhere else.
Just out of curiosity, continuing on that, did we identify which material was faring better? I'm conscious that we primarily have the concrete in the center of town, but are there areas around? Outside of that where we do have concrete sidewalks that were affected by this as well?
Yeah, so basically it's, you know, concrete. Lasts a little longer, wears a little easier, it's subjectable to tree roots, just like asphalt. It's the cost difference between the two. Whereas, you know, asphalt is easier to put in. And most of our neighborhoods, it has, and it's easier to maintain. The cost difference between the two, I can't even. I want to say it's probably double to double and a half. The linear foot to use concrete compared to asphalt.
Barry, this is Walter. Couple of points. Regardless of which of that budget, a set of figures you adopt, the town adopts. It would seem to me that sidewalks and curb crossings, et cetera, curb cuts are all ramps are all going to deteriorate at some rate. And will they deteriorate faster than you can fix them? In other words, are we always gonna be in this situation where we've got more work ahead of us than we've got behind us? In fact, it may even accelerate.
Oh, I don't, Walter, I don't think so. See, the problem we're in right now is kind of like with all of our infrastructure. No maintenance has been done. So we're kind of at that point now where we have to make up for what hasn't been done. To move ahead, just like our roadways. Yeah, you know, we go and pave a road. And I have another road that's in poor condition and that road is just getting worse. It's gonna be the same thing with sidewalks.
Yeah.
You know, you know, money solves all. The more money we have, the more we can get done, the quicker we can bring everything up to a better level. So it won't fall off as quick. But yeah, that's gotta be, unfortunately, that's the scenario we're in right now.
Yeah, so if you picked a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year number. That would take an awful long time to spend thirty-three million dollars to get you back to where you want to be. And in addition, you're, you're losing ground each year to the tune of, I don't know, fifty thousand or whatever the heck the number is. So it's really less than a hundred and fifty thousand if you were to choose a hundred and fifty thousand number.
Well, yeah, Walter, that's exactly it. I wanted to bring this discussion forward. You know, I'm kind of, Blair and I are looking more for a consensus, a direction where everybody wants to go. There's also another component we're gonna have to look at. We haven't gotten into the new sidewalks, you know, so we have. Sidewalks we need to fix and repair. We have areas of town where we heard that, you know, the residents say they want new sidewalks. So we have to kind of strike that balance where, you know, are we repairing sidewalks and putting in new? Are we repairing sidewalks and not putting in new? So it's, I mean, it's gonna be a pretty lengthy discussion for us to, you know, to figure out. A game plan moving forward. I mean, ideally, it's a balanced approach where we're fixing some, putting in new. And, and you know, and trying to, and trying to carry that together.
Yeah. So it also one, just one other catch up question. You said we got about thirty-seven point four miles of sidewalks. We have about what, seventy-five miles of road?
Yeah, right now we're at seventy-five and seventy-four and change.
Okay, so, so, so that says we've got sidewalks on half our roads, is that right?
Um, it's, it's a little deceiving because some roads we have sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
So it's not, I wouldn't say half our roads. And if you take a quick look at our map. The other interesting thing, you know, that when you, when we start looking at the new sidewalks as. Yeah, I want to say that all the streets that were easy to get sidewalks in, they're in. All the streets that are difficult to get sidewalks in, they're not on. So you can see when we look at that, it's gonna start raising the cost, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Barry, there's a, so the chief has a couple of questions in the chat. I don't know if you can, can you see the chat or you want me to tell, read it?
Salt deterioration. Yeah, that's kind of taken the sidewalks. Especially the asphalt ones aren't treated. You know, they might get a little spray by the, the plows or the, or the, you know, road salt getting on it or people shoveling. The asphalt, the biggest issue with the asphalt is the cracking from the tree roots. The concrete ones downtown are in pretty good shape. We switched over from salt to a magnesium chloride. Ice melt a few years ago that kind of slows that down. I don't have any information on the year of installation. That we could probably chase back because most of the sidewalks are related to a subdivision. So when Richard and I get a whole bunch of free time, we can start going through subdivisions and figuring out years and coming up with ages of the sidewalks. It's pretty safe to say, you know, I've been doing this long enough. Beta's been doing this long enough. You can kind of judge the age of the area by the asphalt and how degraded it is. So I want to say, you know, majority of the asphalt sidewalks in the bad areas are those subdivisions that went in the, you know, the seventies and the eighties. Surprisingly, some of the newer subdivisions, you know, newer nineties and two thousands were having the same issues with the tree roots.
I mean, the common theme obviously seems to be the takeaway is the tree between the, you know, within the grass strip between the back of curb and the sidewalk. Which. You know, I don't know, maybe that's not, I think that's a fair analysis on.
Well, it's, it's, it's in both. I mean, some subdivisions have the tree. On the back of the sidewalk on the homeowner's side, but it's not far enough away. And some we have the grass strip with the tree and the other thing is, is the species of tree, you know, we're not the only town dealing with this. I've gone to. Numerous seminars and talk with other towns. You know, it was great forward thinking, hey, we're gonna destroy trees to put up subdivisions and let's new, put new trees back in. And no one thought about, oh, what are the roots gonna do? You know, there's tree barriers and there's tree wells and there's all these different things and species of tree. I think it's just, you know, coming up with. You know, is, is the town in Norfolk gonna support putting trees back in? And then we're gonna have to come up with a maintenance plan. Well, I think too, Barry, I think in the past, you know, going back ten to twenty years. You look at a lot of these trees, you know, there weren't a lot of specs on how to plant them either. Some of them were planted pretty shallow. So, you know, the root system never, never went deep and essentially just grew out underneath these sidewalks and against the curb. You know, when it goes toward the road, it has nowhere to go. So the tree has nothing left other than to get underneath the sidewalk. So. A lot of those specs just, you know.
A lot of those specs just, you know, either weren't known or, or weren't followed, so that's obviously a part of it.
Yep, good point. Um, kind of a little bit to answer Walter's question, so the hundred and twenty five a year over ten years. Really gives us about point eight miles of sidewalk a year. Um, Jack caught a little error on here. I, I, you know, I'm thinking positive that we're gonna fix all the curb ramps. Uh, in those ten years, uh, would be a little bit shy on those, uh, on doing them all, but we would be pretty close. Um, you know, some of the things we have to think about too is funding. You know, so I have, uh, we have the local funds, that's where I'm, you know, pencil it land, you know, a hundred and twenty five thousand. You know, we have the planning board sidewalk fund. Um, is that something the planning board wants to put to, you know, repair and replace, or do we want to focus that money on new? Um, complete streets. So, you know, we're, we're eligible for complete streets projects. A lot of those projects though are for new sidewalks. Um, and they come with a caveat where we have to have the project shovel ready. Engineering and design done, so it's gonna take a commitment from the town. To get that project before we could apply for that grant. Um, state has ADA grants. Again, that's another, you know, we need to be shovel ready. We need to invest some dollars to have projects ready. In order to chase it, and then we have, you know, tip utilities and then the other one is, um. The ARPA funding, and I'll talk about that one a little farther down the line. Not sure Chuck Stone.
Yeah, Chuck does bring up a good point there, that obviously that, uh, you know, when the trees grow up and, uh. And either get into, uh, overhead utilities or even underground utilities, there's obviously a, an issue there as well, so. So some, uh, some of the trees things, you know, with regards to, uh, you know, our policies as a town and, uh. And the planning board, I think, uh, you know, we should really take a hard look at to, uh, to make sure that we're not, uh. We're not causing ourselves, uh, putting ourselves in harm's way with, uh, with trying to do something good.
Uh, so now we can, uh, now the good news, we can talk about the new sidewalks. Um, so like I said, so as part of the study, um, and we kind of wanted to do this, this will actually sets us up. Nicely for the master plan that's coming up soon, we'll, so we'll be able to tie this information and then a master plan. So we, uh, Beta took the information from the complete streets project. Uh, the existing sidewalk master plan that was twenty eleven, twenty ten, somewhere back there. Uh, in the gap analysis to pull some numbers together. Uh, so I'm gonna skip. The numbers for a second so I can kind of highlight some information down here. Um, so the new sidewalk construction cost includes, you know, right away constraints. So in Norfolk, um, a lot of our roads, well, majority of our roads have different rights away. Not every road has a thirty foot right away, not every road has a forty, they're variable. Um, a lot of the side, a lot of the roads where we want to put sidewalks on or that were picked out through complete streets in the master plan. Have environmental constraints, topographic constraints. Um, so those are all included in the cost estimating for those projects. Engineering is, design and construction contingency. And the curve ball here is not every sidewalk project is the same. You know, paving a roadway, pretty much the same, we could pave a roadway. Uh, every single sidewalk project that we looked at had a little bit of a nuance to it, so. Uh, so basically sidewalks with no constraints, probably the most straightforward construction is about a million dollars. Sidewalk with constraints, so it could have the right away environmental topographic, it's about seventeen million. Uh, construction design and contingency, eight million for an estimated cost of new sidewalks, uh, twenty seven million. So as part of this, uh, we use the same priority categories as we did for the repair and replacement. Uh, for the new, uh, the new sidewalk, so now it's one to one, so this helps us. You know, nail down, we have a plan moving forward, uh, you can kind of see on this map. They just, uh, they did a little grading map to show, you know, so this would be the tier A downtown. Um, tier B, uh, tier D is other ones a little bit farther out. Uh, so we can use this methodology moving forward, uh, to help us prioritize our projects. Uh, so some considerations, you know, we need, kind of need to think about moving forward. You know, some of these points Walt has brought up and we've kind of discussed already is, you know, budgeting scenarios. You know, what are we gonna look at for a yearly budget? You know, what kind of balance do we want to strike between? New and re- repair and replace, you know, what are our long-term goals that we're looking at? You know, is the town committed to, you know, engineering and design, you know, that's basically fronting money so we can have. Shovel ready projects that we can now go after grants for, for. Um, you know, the debate, what's more important, replacing what we have or the new? Uh, we got to keep looking at funding opportunities. Um, you know, meeting our ongoing compliance goals, you know, this isn't going away. Now, we've done the study, we, you know, we can't put our head in this and say, oh, we didn't know. Well, now we know, we need some sort of commitment, uh, moving forward to address what we do know. Um, ongoing infrastructure maintenance, you know, Walter made that great point earlier. You know, what's that catch up point? How much do we need to invest to get us to a point where we're, where we're caught up, where we can maintain moving forwards? Uh, one of the things we've been working on lately is maximizing project potential. You know, there's ARPA funds, there's chapter ninety, there's complete streets. So ARPA initially, you know, the funding for that was related to water and stormwater. Um, if we're gonna do some water work on a roadway. Well, let's look at paving the roadway, let's look at repairing the sidewalks and possibly putting some new sidewalks in. Um, probably in the coming weeks, you'll see a couple of presentations from the DPW. Uh, where we kind of outline all these master, you know, water projects. So they not only touch water, but they touch other aspects. Of infrastructure that we would need to do, so we're, you know, trying to maximize what we can with a, with the lowest amount of money and touch all the, uh, you know, the points that are available to us. Um, so that's, that's the presentation. Uh, there were some great questions. If anybody else has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Real quick, Barry, um, do we have a sense of how much is available in funding from those, uh, various sources that you mentioned?
Um, so, so complete streets is the one, you know, we get asked about a lot. So that's, you know, it's available to three hundred and fifty one other cities and towns, and that goes up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, right now, we're working on the ARPA funding. So we've had meetings with Blythe Town Administrator, uh, you know, Toddland Bark, uh, financial. Um, going over what's available to the town. Um, I think you're gonna be, I want to spill the beans, but you're gonna be probably seeing presentations from varying departments in town. Vying for that money that's available. Um, and presenting projects. Uh, chapter ninety, it's a resource, but we use chapter ninety to pave the roads, so I'd hate to. You know, deplete chapter ninety and trying to get cut off at the sidewalks while our roads fall down. Uh, so there's a lot of balancing that we're, we're gonna need to do. Walter's got his hand raised.
Yeah, um, Barry, a, a couple of thoughts, uh, relative to the planning board. Number one. Um, our regulations require us to put in, uh. Sidewalks on both sides of the street on a new development. Very often, we will give the. The developer the option of putting them in on one side and kicking into the, the, uh, street. Sidewalk fund, uh, at thirty dollars a, a linear foot. And that was a number that we, uh, we came to with your guidance. Given the analysis you've just completed, is the thirty dollar number still valid?
Yeah, I think, you know, the, we, we were, you know, honestly, when we looked at it, we were shooting for a higher number. You know, I think that was a discussion we had with the planning board, they didn't want to, you know, penalize a developer. Um, for not putting in, so the thirty thousand, thirty dollars seemed to be, you know, keeping everybody happy. Um, yeah, you're right, the reality of it is, is maybe we need, we need more from them. Um, or, or, or is there other mitigation that we can look at when, you know, forty Bs come into town? And they're close to an area that sidewalks need repair, or we need new sidewalks in, is there, you know, some sort of negotiating we can do? We, we're doing that on Lord Street.
Yeah, okay, our second point is, uh. Uh, based on the ADA requirement of five foot versus four foot sidewalk. Are our current regulations in line with that, or do we need to adjust them?
We need to adjust them. Uh, Rick, Rich and I have talked about this a couple of times. Uh, we, we really need to go through the, the planning board regs with a fine tooth comb. Um, and, and really make sure, because we actually, the planning board regs say three to four foot is allowable with a grass strip. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
In terms of the follow-up clip, or just to add more information on the complete streets program, I just looked it up, so they, there's twelve point five million dollars. Uh, that's, uh, spread out through the whole state for that program.
But that one, uh, that one is very competitive. Uh, I've gone after it a few times, uh. And, uh, have yet to, uh, secure it, so it's, uh, it is a tough one to get.
Yeah, the, like I said, the problem with the, you know, a lot of these grants, so now in the past. You know, the state would fund the engineering and design. All right, and wait for the town to come up with the money to finish the project, but they didn't happen. Uh, so a few years back, the state switched it and said, okay. Town, you come up with the engineering and design for the project, we'll give you the money to get it done. Um, so it, it takes, you know, that's, that, that's kind of the catch twenty-two. It, it takes some faith and some input at our end. To be able to put a project together and then push it to the finish line. Um, to get that, you know, and it's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, so, you know, again, we didn't get into the project level data. Um, that's a presentation for another time, uh, but we'll start seeing, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, isn't much in the grand scheme of. You know, trying to get a new sidewalk in.
Kevin?
Thanks, Rich, uh, and thanks Gary, Blair for putting this together, uh, much like the last report that you guys did like four years ago regarding the streets in town. The, the news isn't the greatest in the world, but it does help us to lay out a plan so that we can be able to address it over time. Uh, the first question I had was related to cobblestone walkways. I mean, there's three things I can count on every year. One of them is always somebody questioning why we have cobblestone walkways. And it seems like every year we've identified that the cost to replace it didn't really equate to a value for us, um, versus what it is today. Um, what was different about this report that brought forth the recommendation to replace them?
Oh, it was, you know, it was kind of. I want to say kind of known all along that they were not ADA compliance. I was kind of looking forward to this report to bring that fact to everybody's light. Uh, that, yeah, everybody loves them, you know, they're great, we, you know, the good, the bad, or whatever we get with them. Um, they're, they're not, they're not legal. So I mean, that's something we, we, we need to address.
Good, thank you. Um, while we're on the subject of the safety component, you had talked about the potential for new sidewalks as being part of the plan as well. Uh, but I didn't see a, a safety aspect to that. Is there any identification of new sidewalk urgency? As it pertains to the safety of pedestrians around town?
No, that wasn't part of this study, so the, the core of the study was looking at the. Uh, ADA assessment of what we have for existing. Uh, then I asked Beta nicely to kind of parlay their ranking system. Into some, um, a tier, so we have now, now we have a prior, uh, prioritization strategy. Along with some costs moving forward. We really didn't have that. Uh, you know, we had the master plan over here, we had complete streets to here. Uh, this was the opportunity to stick it all together. Uh, I think that'll probably come out of the, when we get into the master plan, Kevin. Uh, when we start looking into that, and again, even, you know, even complete streets when it was done. You know, the public input focused more on, you know, what we needed and what we wanted. Uh, we could actually revisit the complete streets and actually maybe put in some repair projects. And prior, prioritize things a little bit better.
Gotcha, thank you. Um. Next, uh, one of the ways that was readily available to offset some of this cost is the commitment that you guys made at the transfer station was gonna start turning a hundred and twenty five thousand in revenue a year, right?
Blair, you could answer that.
Yes.
I was waiting for the smiles, I never got them.
Yes.
Uh, but.
We're, we're inching up, we're inching up.
Yes, we're getting there.
Slowly but surely, yeah, absolutely on the right path. Um, last question I had was, what is the current balance of the planning board sidewalk fund?
That I don't know, uh, Betsy is the one that usually keeps track of that, so. I, I think it was like a hundred and sixty seven thousand in it, we used a portion of that money to help fund this project. Um, so maybe a hundred and fifty and change last time, I think Walter, Rich, I think we're somewhere in that ballpark.
I think that's a good approximation, Barry.
I think that is, uh, I'll, I'll check as you're speaking, just the. It sounds about right.
Uh, Rich, just on that point, how, how often have, uh, new projects been contributing to that sidewalk fund over the last five years or so?
Walter, you're on mute. I, I, as far as I, my muted?
No, Walter, no.
As far as my memories, they all have contributed in some shape or form.
Yeah, and, and it depends on the, on the development, the, you know, the number of developments we get in a given year as to whether. Um, first of all, the fellow wants to put in. Uh, two sidewalks in, in the development, or he just wants to put in one. And there's an opportunity to contribute to the fund, so, uh, it, it's, it's variable depending on the number of people who come forward with developments.
All right, all right, that's everything I had, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
If there's any other. Questions that someone might have?
Yeah, I'll toss one in, um, now, obviously, these are all in costs and budget asks. Um, has there been discussion as far as like phasing the work and? And what it would look like from a year one, year two perspective if we did more than just a hundred and twenty-five K a year?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the scenario we, we looked at, uh, when I, when I worked it out with Jack, I didn't want to go past a hundred and fifty. I didn't want to give that scary number. Uh, I, I thought I wanted to give some numbers that were people were agreeable to, that, you know, looked a little bit better. Hey, I, I'd love to come in at two million dollars a year and, and tell you that we can get a lot done. Um, I, you know, again, I think that's part of this presentation is getting that feel, um, and see where everybody wants to go with it.
Yeah, like for me, I would be very interested in understanding what the. Cost would be to remedy the poor at minimum. And then build off of that.
Let me, uh, actually, yeah, like we could answer that right, right here. Um, in that. We are that specific. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, just to, to knock off the port, uh, fifteen point seven million. But the problem with that is, is, you know, that's a straight line number. Um, you know, when, when we put projects together, you know, you got to look at mobilization and other things, right? Um, so that cost is probably greater, eh, because now I'm, you know, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm not, you know. Focus on one area of the town, uh, that's probably, you know, a smarter plan to look at. Uh, so we've broken the town into zones at the DPW for, you know, salting and sanding and, and other things that we do. Uh, you know, a zone, uh, analysis might be something a little bit more beneficial. Uh, so then we can break it out and, you know, get the economy of scale and things like that involved. Uh, the other thing too is, you know, a lot of this is when we get to a certain level. Um, it's going to exceed the DPW's capacity to do it. Uh, so then it's gonna have to get subbed out to a contractor, so we, those are things like I always caution people on, I used to give a lot of these presentations to other towns. Where sometimes they bite off more than they could chew. Uh, realizing that, you know, the town forces couldn't handle it, and all of a sudden, you're subbing everything out. And you got everything else going in town, and now you need an engineering firm to oversee because you're, you're short staffed, so, you know, there's a lot of nuances to it. Um, but when you, when you start looking at it that way.
Yeah, and the point of the zones, I think it'd be interesting to see the zone breakdown and then the conditioning tier percentages for each zone.
Yep.
In our next discussion.
Karen has a, her hand up. Riley?
Hi, thanks, Rich. Um, I come to the table here, um, as someone who has pushed a wheelchair around this town for nineteen years. I think a lot of people have maybe seen my son, um, son and I out. My son Connor, um, has a wheelchair that is typical width, but it's very long, uh, he lays flat. And I think we know every crack and crevice in every single sidewalk in town. Um, I just wanted to make two comments. One, we have never ever had an issue with the width of any sidewalk. Um, so I don't know, I was just wondering if that ADA compliant. Issue with it, uh, sidewalks being five feet would be for, say, cities or sidewalks that might be more busy. Bizier, you know, than a town like ours. Um, and if that would save the town any money?
Um, oh, well, let me see.
I know, just something to think of, you know.
Jack, can you, uh, answer that one? You're a little bit knowledgeable on the regs that I, that I am. Uh, you're on, you're on mute, Jack. There you go.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, that's a great question, um, the, the. Accessibility, uh, really requires at a minimum three feet, so if you encounter an obstacle.
For to get around the obstacle, it has to be three feet. Massiot standard sidewalk width is five feet. Um, but that is really a standard that, um. It considers, uh, the passing width that is required periodically. So if you had a four-foot sidewalk with an occasional five-foot width. Um, you would be, you know, uh, technically compliant. But again, it's, it, you're making a reasonable accommodation, so. Depending on the location of the sidewalk and the amount of pedestrian traffic you can expect. You, you, you're sort of, um, you know, you have your, um, um. Guidelines to go by that aren't hard and fast five feet in every case.
Is there a, a percentage or other sort of equation that we would utilize in order to determine that?
It's not so much a, an equation, it's, it's just guidance that, um. That, uh, I could, I could link you to, um, in a federal register, it's, it, it's, uh. Um, it's more of a legal document than anything else, but, um. It's, um, and. Uh, there is some information uh, like that in the report.
Yeah, so as, as part of this project, you know, Jack and I had discussed this, y- you know. Not knowing what the future is going to be, is it easier to say we're going to make everything five feet now? Uh, so in five years, when it comes out, this says everything needs to be five feet, we're already there, is it to do four feet now? Um, and then hope things don't change, um, so for, you know, for the purposes, we use the five foot, you know, with the cost associated with that one. Um, you know, because we, we have a, the, I don't think we have a standard width sidewalk in town, I mean, they're all pretty much variable. And I got three and a half and fours, I mean, we're all over the place as it is, uh, so we thought it might be a good idea to, you know, actually set a standard now. Uh, that we have moving forward.
And I thi- I think to add to that too is, you know, another component that you kind of alluded to Barry was that. Uh, obviously Norfolk is growing and, uh, you know, who knows where we're going to be with, you know, forty Bs and. And the population that we have and, uh, and the type of, uh, town that Norfolk wants to be ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years from now. And with all of these sidewalks and, and roads as well, being as expensive as they are. Um, you know, and we're finding this out with the fire station, that, uh, it's a lot cheaper to do it now than it will be down the road, so. It may be, uh, you know, we may have to take it on the chin here a little bit, but I think that, uh, if we look at it with the future in mind. Uh, and make some good decisions here, I think, uh, I think there's a path forward.
Nothing else? Rich, no questions?
No, how many questions, we're moderating.
Chuck has his hand up, I think.
He does, yes, chief.
Well, he's on mute.
There we go.
There you go.
Trouble, trouble getting that to work, um, going back to like the early two thousands and mid two thousands, which I saw on way too many committees. Um, that had to do with sidewalks and vehicle stabilization, we, we actually had a. Uh, an article on town meeting for vehicles and, uh, sidewalk stabilization that went down in flames, but. Uh, one of the things that we did work on and, and you're, you're doing the same thing is prioritizing when. Uh, and each, uh, maybe street, uh, gets done. And we, and I remember when we did it, we kind of worked out from the center and, uh, in the proximity of the schools. And we thought that that was good, but there was big pieces, uh, that needed me, I mean, one simple one is right on your street, Blair, a midway. Uh, branch, you know, it's.
Yeah.
They wanted to, to get that one done, but it's still hasn't been done.
Uh, that's on, that was part of the, uh, part of the study, chief, uh, so we kind of took all that historic information. Um, I, it's tough to see, but this map on the end of the slide, did everybody see that? The, the purple, uh, and the green are filling in sidewalks where on the complete streets. Um, and the master plan, so we kind of compiled all that information that's in there, uh, you know, Rich and I have been talking about. Uh, midway branch for a while, you know, is it a multi-use trail, it's a, you know, so there's a lot of, you know, discussions out there, and we would just wanted to take. You know, th- this project as the opportunity, yeah, to squish it all together. Um, so now we can, you know, not, not all of us have the, uh, vast knowledge of you, you have, I've only been in town, you know, going on four years. Um, yeah, we might be rehashing some of the past, but I, I would just wanted to bring it back to light so everybody can catch up to it.
Okay, I'm more than happy to, you know, phone call away or text away or email away, so, you know, more than happy to. Just to let you know what happened going back.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's forty.
I think that'll be, that'll be important, well, hopefully you're still around when we start the master plan, um, but that, you know, that's, that's the input we're going to need.
Okay, no problem.
Depends how you answer that question, he'll be around, we'll be still working. Right, chief?
Uh, again, available by a, a Zoom meeting.
He won't be worried about a snowstorm, let's put it that way.
No, I do. I do plan to be someplace warm, but I can, a Zoom meeting.
Yes.
No, I think, so just that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Barry, but in terms of the plan that the chief was involved with. Is what fed into this plan as well, so that, that plan that you worked on before chief. Was what was given to Beta as well, that you worked with that committee in terms of the sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, yeah. Yeah, basically everything we had, and then the interesting thing, the complete streets project. Actually wrapped in some of the old streets, so there was overlap all over the place. Um, it was just the opportunity to kind of go through and, and, and just get it in a better picture. And I, I think, yeah, go ahead, Rich.
I just think it's important, you know, just to clarify, so people know that that was a building block that built, this built. That was a block that built this plan too, so it wasn't. Within, uh, we, we weren't throwing the ba- they weren't throwing the baby out of the bath, where that work, that work is still. Became part of this plan.
Yeah, and, and like I kind of talked about before, unfortunately, the easiest scenario to put it in. Is all the streets that have sidewalks were the easiest streets to get sidewalks in. Um, the streets that don't have sidewalks that people have talked about, um, are going to be the toughest and the most challenging ones to get sidewalks in. Uh, due to right away, environmental and topographic issues. Yep.
Yes.
So I think, you know, again, it's going to be, you know, the discussion i- has been opened up tonight, but in the future, it's going to be. You know, what's that balance, what's that direction Norfolk's looking for? You know, is it a, is it a combo of new and replaced, is it a focus on new, is it a focus on repair? You know, that's, you know, the conversation was started tonight and we can move forward and see where it's going to lead us.
Yeah, it's similar, we're in similar circumstance when, I forget, I'm trying to think what governor it was, but, uh, I mean, it was actually, uh, maybe Romney, but. He had put forth, you know, fix it first, if you recall that, I mean, I think it was Romney administration that, there was a lot of these new projects and. They wanted to get back to fixing, you know, again, fixing the old infrastructure that needs to be fixed before we build new, so that's part of the. The balance that they're talking about tonight to try to achieve, you know, some new, but also take care of what was exist, you know, what needs to be fixed.
I, I will say too, just, um, to add to what's been said. Is that the, the, the bipartisan infrastructure law that is starting to come online now. Um, you know, there will be money available for, uh, directly to towns. And, um, other agencies for poor-conditioned sidewalks, um, and roadways and, and also for. In, in various, um, grant, uh, programs for multimodal, um. Types of projects, including pedestrian, um, you know, similar to con- complete streets, so. You'll start to see some of these programs, um, come online and I'm, I'm seeing in, um. In, uh, some of the, uh, the information coming through that these grant programs are going to start opening up next month. Um, so, and shovel-ready projects will be important. Um, you know, to, uh, to, to take advantage of that funding, so, um, stay tuned.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, that's, that's what stops us short, we just don't have the, the shovel-ready projects.
Un- understood, understand.
Well, let's make, uh, Walter, maybe one last call, and if not, conclude this evening's presentation?
There we go, uh, yeah, uh, one last round of questions from, from anyone, uh, to, to Barry and. Or anyone else for that matter, and, uh. Then we probably should adjourn. So anybody got any last questions that would like to direct to, to Barry?
No, I do not know how much snow we're getting this weekend.
It's supposed to be light and fluffy, though.
I hope it is.
Famous last words, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Walter, we got it, we got a couple extra trucks if you'd like to come out and drive with us.
I think my driving days in snowplowing are over. All right, folks, uh, thank you very much, uh, we'll adjourn and, uh, carry on, so thanks again. You guys did a good job, great job.
Thanks very much, everybody, have a good night.
Bye, Jack.